Brian Campion, one of the state senators. I'm here this evening with Senator Sears from Appropriation, Representative Corcoran from Transportation, Representative Mary Morrissey, who's there from Institutions, any other elected officials. So we've got, we're gonna start, we're gonna start off because we have about an hour. And what we'd like people to do is come down, sit wherever you feel most comfortable. We had a PFOA hearing a couple of years ago. I know it seems like a far distance, so feel free to get a little closer. Folks will have two minutes to speak. And we'll call your name. And they will say who's on deck. I know I have about 13 names here, and I think I have the second sheet coming. Actually, Robin Strompern. So it looks like we have about 21 people. Great, perfect. All right, so why don't we start off? Senator Sears, do you want to say something as members of Appropriations?
Welcome, and thank you for coming here. Mary, if you'd join us. And this is, it used to be on interactive TV. With the demise of interactive TV, I'm glad to see Cat TV's here to cover us. So we just want to hear from you and your concerns about the governor's budget. Is it too high? Is it not enough? The only thing I'm gonna ask is if you have the same thing to say as everybody else, you know, you can hear the same thing four times, maybe a little changed it up a little bit. But both Tim and Brian, and I know about Mary, are heading to Montpelier right after this meeting. So in order for them to get up there, we're gonna have to close at right at 6:30. So I hope we hear from everyone. So please be, like, two minutes.
Representative Corcoran, or Representative Morrissey, do you want to say anything?
No, Tom. Yeah, just be real listening. Thank you very much for coming.
All right, so we're gonna start with, it looks like, Joni?
Joanie.
Joni, sorry, Joanie.
Yes.
Yes, Joanie, come on down. We all know Joanie. And then Robin Strompern, you're on deck.
Oh, by the way, if you have written testimony, you'll take that. It'll be part of the overall bench of the meeting and all the mistakes that are going on.
Oh, yeah.
So you can have it. Thank you.
Joanie, wherever you want to sit, and I apologize.
My name is Joanie Charbonneau. I live in Pawnee, Vermont. And I'm the volunteer director of His Pantry Food Shelves at Sacred Heart St. Francis in downtown Bennington. I'm here to express support for a new state funding in the amount of $500,000 for the Vermont Food Bank to scale up their Vermonters' Feeding Vermonters Initiative. Just a little background, His Pantry is open two days a week. We serve over 850 families that have food insecurities in this area. Last year, we received a grant from the Vermonters' Feeding Vermonters Initiative, which gave us a limited amount of funding that we could use to partner with up to two local farmers in order to obtain fresh local produce for our guests. This was a very successful program. It allowed us to offer a wide variety of fresh picked fruits and vegetables to those in need, which regular income would never allow them to purchase such quality food. And at the same time, it supports our local farmers. I ask if you would please consider supporting this initiative, which will help so many Vermonters, both in making healthy, local food choices available to them, and also help support the state's agricultural economy. Thank you.
Thank you, Joni. Do you want to give your testimonies? Thank you very much. Okay, Robin Strompern?
Do you want me to come down there and use my voice?
That'll be great. And then Maureen, you're on deck.
Okay. Excuse me, Brian, there's some people who just arrived. Do you have a sign up sheet?
Sure, yep.
So I am Robin Strompern, and I am a community member of Children's Integrated Services Administrative Team. That team meets monthly. Children's Integrated Services is an innovative service begun in 2009 and has been level funded for the past 11 years. The services are for pregnant women and children prior to reaching their sixth birthday. The services complement each other with the goal of providing an array of services that are integrated and support a child and family's growth with a goal of reducing services by the time a child reaches kindergarten. There was a study done in the summer of 2019 to assess the cost of services. The study by the state of Vermont showed that the actual cost of services was $634 per child, but the funding that is offered is $502. There is a funding gap of $2.4 million. My request is to increase the funding for Children's Integrated Services by the $204 million so that children, families, and can be provided the best services possible, more than just adequate. In the Bennington CIS region, there were 142 open clients on January 1st, 2018. On June 30th, at the end of the fiscal year, there were 237 open clients. A growth of 95 additional people who needed services. Some of the services are speech. Some of the services are far more complicated than that. So the request is $2.4 million to be put into the C- Children's Integrated Services.
That's over above the governor's recommendations.
In addition to the governor's recommendation, so.
Thank you. Maureen, and then Jennifer?
Good evening. I'm Maureen O'Neill, and I'm Food Service Director for Southwest Vermont Supervisory Unit, the Build School in North Bennington, and I'm Executive Director for the Abbey Group. When I started my school food service profession back in 2009, part of the school was just getting the momentum and the Healthy Hunger Free Act by Obama Administration was happening. People were caring about what the kids were eating in school, and I loved it. But I soon discovered that the students in my district were not educated or aware of farms, what we grow locally, and what we don't, and the benefits of improving childhood nutrition. This needed to change, and we've all been working on it hard since. By allocating annually for the farm to school in early childhood, students can learn at an early age healthy habits that they can carry through for the rest of their lives. And farm to school education also includes food systems education that increases their connection to where the food is coming from, their farms, and their community. By allocating annually for farm to school, the vast majority of Vermont students will have access to fresh, local food in their school cafeterias and early care programs, again, improving school food nutrition. The demand for farm to school funding continues to grow each year, but the state allocation is not keeping up with this demand. We've been making great progress, but in order to continue the progress, we must do some investment until we reach $500,000 a year. Please at least do not decrease the $231 that we're allocating right now, but we definitely need to keep progress going. We know that every dollar invested in farm to school returns $1.60 to Vermont's local economy by creating more business for our local farmers. We've already seen incredible success from farm to school in early education, and we need to continue to help and support to keep us.
All right, thank you. Jennifer, and then Sarah Blanchett.
I'm Council on Aging here in Bennington. I'm here to speak on behalf of Bennington County. We are, I'm here to ask for and support increase in Choices for Care funding. It's really what we're asking for is parity with what the nursing homes receive each year. While the demographics are changing in the state of Vermont to indicate that more services and supports are going to need to be rendered, whether or not that's in the nursing home or at home, what we know is that most older Vermonters prefer to receive their care in their home, in the setting that is of least restriction, and oftentimes in the homes that they've lived and paid for and have secured. And that's where they want to live until their last moment. The Choices for Care Program provides in-home care to folks who are nursing home level of care. And what we know is, is that these services rendered within the home actually could cost half of what it would cost in a nursing facility. And while the 2% increase would be very much appreciated, it would just help to basically maintain the services and supports that we are already providing through our fleets of case managers, as well as other service providers within the Council on Aging. I am asking you to please consider that increase. The demographics are trending that we're gonna continue to need these services and supports for older Vermonters, and it's really important that we pay attention to these trends and take more proactively moving ahead. So your support is very much appreciated.
So you are asking for a 2%?
2% increase, please.
Thank you very much. Sarah, great job, and then Emily Gray.
Yes, I have Julie Brighley and Brittany Gates with me.
All at once?
Yes.
Great, okay. Welcome.
Thank you all. So I'm Sarah Blanchett, and I'm here to support Parent-Child Centers for $400,000 this year, 2021. I'm the Opportunities Teacher at Sunrise Family Resource Center, Opportunities with the Alternative High School for Pregnant and Parenting Homegirls in the community. Along with my statement, I have statements that I actually have my students with me with their testimony from the Participants in the Opportunities Program. Participants may initially come to Opportunities in search of high school diploma, but leave with a network of resources at their fingertips. They receive services that all have a direct impact on their future and the future of their families. These services include, but are not limited to, housing support, child interference, family advocacy, and employment services. It is through the unique nature of the Family Resource Center and the notion of fostering a spirit of open optimism and through positive experiences that these individuals are able to be reached and provided for at a holistic level with a family-friendly feel. Parent-Child Centers such as Sunrise provide a safe environment which promotes the development of community need for the unified goal of bridging the gap of socioeconomic status. Any funds granted to family resources are a direct investment in the community at large as it goes directly towards creating self-sustaining individuals who will ultimately break this cycle.
I am currently a student at Sunrise Family Resource Center Opportunities Program. Sunrise gives families the opportunity to make up lost educational time by providing childcare assistance, CIS services, FAP services, and parenting and life skills classes. The flexible schedule and open environment makes it possible to obtain a diploma. Sunrise will see me through my journey as a mother. I came to Sunrise as a young, soon-to-be mother, and Sunrise supported me every step of the way. They took the time to work with me and teach me about being pregnant and how to be a parent. I know I can count on Sunrise in the future to help me find employment and anything else I may need.
I am currently a student at Sunrise Opportunities Program at Sunrise Family Resource Center. I am enrolled in this program to earn my high school diploma. I dropped out of high school because I missed my date. Opportunities, sorry. Opportunities allows me to have a flexible schedule and regain missed time to make earning my diploma doable. Sunrise has helped me overcome many obstacles and fears, such as public speaking. Also, Sunrise Family Resource Center has onsite daycare. They watch my child while I go to school, so I don't have to worry about her. I can visit her and trust the teachers there. I wouldn't be looking at graduating in June if it wasn't for Sunrise. My mom graduated from Sunrise Opportunities. And if it wasn't for Sunrise, I don't know how my life slash childhood could have been. Because of Sunrise, my mom has been an LNA for almost 11 years. Sunrise helps teenage mothers graduate from high school and help find housing and support you.
Well done. Thank you. So that was Sarah, Emily, and Brittany.
Yes.
All right, Brittany, perfect. Thank you all very much. And we go. Ready? Yeah.
I'm here this evening to express my support for House Bill H744 and the appropriations of $100,000 to fund a revenue study, as well as $500,000 to offset the recent loss of revenue for access, public access television in Vermont. At the local level, public access television provides the only venue for the expression, dissemination, and coverage of hyper-local issues. No other media outlets are going to cover select board meetings, school board meetings, local candidate forums, hometown parades, festivals, celebrations, or the many other events and activities which make up the fabric of a community. No other media outlets are going to give as much time and resources for local organizations to spread the word about their mission and their involvement in the community, or to individuals to share their interests, life experiences, knowledge, or perspectives with their community. But the vital importance of public access television extends far beyond the local level. As wealth, power, influence, and access in the United States become increasingly concentrated in fewer and fewer hands, public access television is becoming the last fashion of free speech and unfettered expression. Media content at the commercial level is controlled by a wide variety of factors. It may be as simple as a reporter's or an editor's decision as to what to include in a story, but control of content is also influenced by the agendas of media ownership, boards of directors, sponsors, and of course, ratings. Only public access television allows people to say what they want, how they want, limited only by commonly accepted standards of decency. We live in an area where we are witnessing in real time our democracy being undermined and degraded from its very foundation. Please do not allow the pillar that is public access television to be brought down as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lisa, and then Beth Wallace.
Good evening. Thank you very much for this opportunity. So my name is Lisa Cipriano, as many of you know. I'm here as the Executive Director for the Center for Restorative Justice, locally known as CRJ. We are the Bennington County's Community Justice Agency, and we serve over 1,500 people a year. And you are wonderful at supporting our many programs and services through our many state grants that we get. But tonight, I'm specifically here to talk to you about after-school programming. So at CRJ, we work mainly with at-risk youth. These are youth that have either been involved with the juvenile justice system or have a high likelihood of entering that system at some point. So we have found in our community, after-school, safe, supervised, substance-free space is virtually non-existent for at-risk teens. Sure, there's programs at school, but these are not the youth that are gonna join the soccer club or the drama club or the soccer team. But last year, so we applied for a grant with Vermont After School For All to support and expand our after-school programming. And fortunately, we were awarded a two-year grant. So with this grant, we created a program called The Lounge. And it's just a drop-in program that provides young people with supervision, someone to listen to them, a place to grab a snack, help with homework, connect with kids, and yes, play video games. I know we don't want them to, but that's what kids want. They really want to hang out with their friends, play video games. And so that's what we provide. We provide food, and they come and hang out with us. So I'm pleased to see the governor supports the importance of after-school programming, as he outlined in his proposal for universal after-school. And so with our lounge, we can only continue to fill this important void in our community with more funding. So I'm just asking you, along with the governor, to help show your support for after-school programming and see that there's funding put in the FY21 state budget to do so. So thank you very much.
Thanks. Beth Wallace did, Denise? Excellent. Thank you very much. Great job.
Hi. I'm Beth Wallace from the town of Shaftesbury. I'm also the Family and Community Partnership Manager for Bennington County Head Start, Early Head Start, who currently serve about 200 infants, toddlers, and preschoolers. I'm also here as a parent of a child who attends school in North Bennington. First of all, thank you for your support of early childhood care in the past several years and of the Childcare Financial Assistance Program, which makes so much of that work possible. I was reviewing the governor's State of State address and State Budget address, and he, a number that stood out to me was that there are 55,000 fewer people under the age of 45 living in Vermont now than there was in 2000. And that just connects to me around after-school because high-quality, engaging after-school programming is not only unattractive to families looking to relocate to Vermont communities, but it's also absolutely critical to developing and maintaining a viable workforce. I'm very fortunate that my daughter's independent school offers after-school programming Monday through Friday until 5:00. That's almost unheard of in our county, that it's that regular. And I rely heavily on that, and I pick her up at exactly 5:00 every day, and I'm usually running over from my office at Head Start. I am from an upper-middle-class family that can pay for that service, and I consider myself lucky to be able to do so. Governor Scott recognized that one size does not fit all, and that it's not prudent to reinvent the wheel. And we currently have a system that supports after-school and access for the most vulnerable children, so children in foster care, or children under 200% of the federal poverty guidelines. The Childcare Financial Assistance Program, CCFAP, is such a program, and it increases access for folks based on their income, not only for early childhood and preschool care, but it also covers after-school programming. So I think that is a mechanism that we can leverage that already exists, that we don't have to recreate to expand access. So we support the $3 million boost in childcare subsidies, and then some to further that after-school priority. And then additional funding, like the After School For All grants that Lisa was referring to, for programs to use for startup funding and expansion funding will further that goal. So that is the support we're asking for. Thank you.
Denise, and then Cynthia Massey.
Hello. So thank you for hearing from all of us this evening. My name is Denise Mayne, and I'm the Executive Director of Sunrise Family Resource Center. You have heard a lot about us tonight. So I will shorten it up a little bit. I do understand that I'm going to be asking for two decisions here. And the first one is asking for the support of the Parent-Child Center bill that Al had mentioned, and as well as requesting, a request in regards to the budget. Our base funding for our eight core services as a parent-child center should be $10 million. We have postponed, we have proposed a three-year phased approach to reach that goal. Our request for 2021 is to increase the master grant by $4 million. We also request a $1.5 million in one-time funding to continue to catch up on deferred administrative and maintenance expenses that have been delayed as we have dealt with underfunding for decades. $1 million was allocated in 2019, and the money is being used for critical project at PCCs throughout the state. We're very appreciative of this funding, and Sunrise has begun with needed work on our aging buildings, and we're looking forward to doing much-needed technology upgrades. I care deeply about the work of PCCs because our focus is on families. We use family-centered practices in order to support our ability to successfully engage all our participants. We know that children do well when their parents do well. We work to decrease the effects of adverse childhood experiences and decrease child maltreatment. Our efforts reduce child custody rates, and we are working each day to help fight addiction. We are very actively involved in assuring that children's basic needs are met by helping to house children and their families. We are a prevention agency, providing parent education support to over 4, and we do over 4,000 home visits per year. We are needed, we are a needed service to over 1,000 families each year in Bennington County. And we thank you for your service. And I'm hopeful that you will support PCCs in this work that we do with the tireless challenges of all families with young children, as well as the new challenges that we all face with today. They also have Robin's testimony. She forgot to read.
Cynthia, and then Jackie Morrow.
Well, you've heard from Al and Sarah and Denise on Sunrise Family Resource Center, so I'm not gonna provide you with more duplicitous information. I'm gonna make it real. I was raised in Bennington County from a single, with a single mom who didn't go past eighth grade. Okay? I am now a mother of six. I'm the grandmother of 12. They all live in Bennington County. I am a former state-registered childcare provider. I was trained to support families that were in protective service custody. I was a member of the shelter bed community out of UCS. I am now a fiscal manager at Sunrise Family Resource Center. Parent-child centers, Sunrise is one of 16 from throughout the state, are vital to the young families and communities throughout the state. They are absolutely vital. I talk to these students. I hear their stories, and I can relate. I spent nights in an automobile as a child because we had no place to go. Families don't have to do that anymore. Parent-child centers are the front line of their support for these kids, and they're kids. There wasn't opiate addictions when I was young. It was alcohol. I mean, it's all the same thing, just a different generation. I'm really urging you to invest in today in these children, in these families, in these communities because you're gonna see a difference in the years to come. You absolutely will in generations to come. You heard these students tonight. They've got it going on. They really do. And they wouldn't without the support that they get at these parent-child centers. As I said, PCCs are on the front line of Vermont communities. They're providing effective, coordinated, social support responses for these families, whether it's homelessness, drug use, hunger, transportation, clothing, doesn't matter. They're really, we do it. We make it happen.
Thank you very much. Is that?
No.
If you change your mind, you can always email us.
I absolutely will email you.
Yeah, it is helpful to have.
Think about what I said.
Okay, after Jackie, Becky, Marbella?
Hi. My name is Jackie Morrow, and I'm here to speak in support of $100,000 funding for a study to secure the future of PEG access television in Vermont as outlined in H744 and S318. As a volunteer producer for our local Cat TV, I do a lot of historical documentaries about Bennington, from the history of individual streets, buildings, and our famous and not-so-famous citizens. I was able to get firsthand oral history about the town's corner grocery stores, most of which have disappeared. I interviewed Hank Salem, whose family had a store on Main and Branch Street. His stories and insights were wonderful. He died three months after I filmed him, and I am so glad I was able to record his and his family's story to share with the community on Cat TV. This station has made it possible for people like me to capture and preserve our local history. Also, as a beekeeper, I have done several programs on why these little insects are so important. I've created the George Aiken Wildflower Trail at the Bennington Museum and have done a lot of programs on why native plants are so important to the environment. Being able to explain environmentally important topics on a local level to a wide audience is a good thing. Having our local public access station is good for our town. Unfortunately, the traditional funding sources for PEG are disappearing, and it is crucial to examine alternatives to preserve this asset. Please support the $100,000 appropriation to fund the study and address this issue before PEG services are compromised beyond repair. We are also asking for a $500,000 appropriation to support PEG in the interim. Vermont's centers lost a combined total of $500,000 in 2018. Funding losses are expected to continue to grow as cable subscribers decline and federal laws threaten the funding base. I want to thank you very much for considering these two financial requests so that programs like this can be reported by our local public access television station and shared with the community at large. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jackie. Becky, and then Zach Cooper.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for hearing from us. I'm Becky.
I'm Becky Rabella, with Shire's Housing Implementation Manager and Community Specialist. I am here tonight on behalf of the Vermont Food Bank. I would like to express my support for the state funding on the Vermonters feeding Vermonters for $500,000. Being a farmer in Vermont up until this past summer, it would be wonderful if some of the Vermont Food Bank monies can stay in local farms. Also, we provide meals monthly at six different sites throughout Bennington County and Deerfield Valley. We also have food drops at those sites as well. And a lot of our participants look at the boxes and can't understand why our produce and fruit are coming from Canada. I too can't understand that. I would very much like it to come from Vermont, New York, Massachusetts, bordering states, not bordering countries. This program is great without the Vermont Food Bank. We at SASH and especially Shire's Housing would not be able to provide the food and meals that we do. We now have a program started at Applegate, and we service about 150 or more families a month from the Food Bank, strictly from the Food Bank. So, this is a worthwhile program, and I hope that you consider funding this.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Zach, and then Rebecca Bishop.
My name is Zach Keever. I'm the Community Outreach SASH member for the Vermont Food Bank in the rural borough of Bennington area. I'm also here to express support for the new state funding in the amount of $500,000 for the Vermont Food Bank to scale up their Vermonters feeding Vermonters initiative. As an outreach staff member in the area, I've seen the impact this program could have on local farms and the surrounding community, including those most in need. I work closely with our farm partners in the area and know that our purchasing of their crops gives a much-needed boost to the farms this time of year. For every $1 spent on local produce, an additional 60 cents goes back to the local economy. Local produce spent... Or local funding spent within the community goes back directly to the community. Obviously, as Becky just mentioned, funding that goes outside of the country doesn't circulate back into the economy. Additionally, the farmers get the satisfaction knowing their crops are helping people stay healthy in their own community right here in Vermont. As Becky spoke right before me and as Joanie spoke at the very beginning, both of those organizations rely heavily on the Vermont Food Bank and the local produce that we get from local farms. This program helps farmers, helps the local economy, and those most in need right here in Vermont. So, please consider supporting the program.
Great. Thank you very much.
I only have a written copy.
Yeah, we did that, yeah. Rebecca, and then Julie Cunningham, please.
Hello. I'm Rebecca Bishop. I'm Assistant Director at Bennington Head Start and Early Head Start, and I've recently moved to Shasbury as well. I wanted to come today in support of front-of-school funding, up to $500,000 is the full request in the bill. At Head Start, we serve 169 infants, toddlers, and preschoolers countywide. We currently have one of the agency of agriculture front-of-school grants, and we've been able to make many program improvements. For many years, our program has been in partnership with Highland Hall Gardens in North Bennington. We receive nutrition education. We visit the garden. We plant. We harvest. We taste test, and we include our parents every year. We have also partnered with seniors from the nearby Independent Living Center there at Highland Hall Gardens. These experiences are often a first for preschoolers, but often for their family members as well. We were able to participate at the Northeast Farm-to-School Institute at Shelburne Farms, and thereby, we've been able to train all of our staff again in the importance of local foods, produce, and nutrition education. Some of the things that we do in partnership, we partner with Rise Vermont. We have a robust farm-to-school committee. We implement Harvest of the Month curriculum, the Vermont Harvest of the Month. We have a cooking club that we provide healthy education, recipe makeover for our families, so they're making recipes in a more healthy way with local products. Also, we use some data points that we've directly collected as a result of our Department of Agriculture grant. We know that for every dollar that we invest in our farm-to-school program, it returns $1.60 to our community. And over the last year, we've been able to spend $3,150 at our local producers at Mighty Food Farms, True Love Farms, Terry's Orchard. Also, we provide about $50,000 breakfasts and lunches to our children every year. And as a result of the agriculture grant, we've been able to save $16,060 pounds of compost into the... From the local landfills. And our children have learned about compost in our families as well. So, thank you very, very much. And in addition to my testimony, I have some case studies about our program that I'd like to provide.
And I apologize. We always have to repeat that.
Yes. Thank you.
So, we want to be respectful. Sorry to do that. Julie Cunningham, and then Kathy Dickie.
We're kind of together.
Absolutely.
Hi. Thanks so much for hearing all these stories. I'm Julie Cunningham.
Kathy Dickie.
And Kathy Dickie. And I'm the Director of Families First in Southern Vermont, and we serve children, youth, and adults with disabilities in Windham and Bennington Counties. And our ask, along with all of the agencies doing this work throughout the state, is a 3% increase. And we are asking that because... I just have to tell you, I'm extremely worried about my workforce. We don't have group homes in Vermont. We do not have an institution. We don't have sheltered workshops. Governor Dean promised, when Brandon Training School closed, I promise you will always have the funding for... To keep people with disabilities in their communities from where they're from. And unfortunately, that's not a promise that was kept. If you look at a state that gets more robust... They spend more money on development services. Our neighbor to the left, New York State, they have group homes. They're paying way more than us. And they have more lawsuits and actually, people dying in care. So, not only are we doing the work that's protecting the civil rights of people with disabilities, but it's also the most cost-effective model. When somebody can no longer live with their family, I hire amazing people like Kathy, who welcomes somebody into her home. And why don't you say a little bit about your...
I'll try to be quick, yeah. So, I'm not a public speaker by any means. But I've been a family... With family sorcerer for years this month, being a home care provider. My young guy was 19 when he came to live with us. He's autistic and was in a... He had lived at home with his family and became very violent. He just needed a structured, calm housing situation. And he was also in high school in Monmouth.
We knew him. We knew his...
And so, he... The first two years he was with us, he was in schools. And he was, you know, in a facility where nobody had to worry about. But everybody knew. Everybody wondered what will happen when he graduated school at 22. So, I was nervous about it myself. But this agency is incredible and has given me the supports to... We have a worker for him, a community support worker. He's out in the community six hours a day. He volunteers at the food pantry, which there was a woman here speaking. He works at the state building two days a week doing some little cleaning. That's his job. He goes out to the rec center, swimming, goes to yoga. He's very involved and out every day in the community, teaching a lot of people about differences as he's taught us, more than we can imagine. So, his family, of course, was wondering what would happen to him when, you know, school... And so, moving in with him, with us, was like a stepping stone. You know, naturally, a child of age 18 kind of hopefully moves out of the house and so into this big, new world. And so, he now has, you know, he has a great life, and he's out and about and giving back and enjoying himself. And so, we have a great agency that supports this.
And so, my worry is, in four years, I've not been able to give Kathy a raise. And I don't know any other profession where that would be acceptable. So, actually, since I'm on TV, I'm recruiting home providers and direct care professionals. If you want to come work for me, and hopefully, we'll get the backing of our legislators. I know when the governor talks about protecting vulnerable Vermonters, I believe he means it. I know you all mean it. And yet, the budget is where the rubber hits the road. And the budget is our values. And so, if you can invest in... I don't want to compete with anybody either. I think everybody's speaking tonight. This is our state. This is our... Most vulnerable people are children.
Thank you.
And we have responsibilities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carol Harrington, and then Matt Harrington.
Hi. Hi. I'm Linda Putney. I'm speaking. Carol signed up before me. But I'm the President of the Board of Bennington Project Independence, and Carol is Vice President. I'm here not only as President of the Board, but as a recipient of services for my mom several years ago at BPI. And quite frankly, my husband and I couldn't have kept her with us for two years without BPI. But I'm also here for the Vermont Association of Adult Day Services, which is the broad umbrella. The 14 Adult Day Programs across the state are committed to make Vermont the best state in the nation to age in place. Adult Day Services, well, you know what they do. You've been... You've been... You've seen our facility. You know how the wonderful services we provide. We are requesting a Medicaid reimbursement increase in fiscal year 2021, the budget for 2021. Adult Day Programs are reimbursed at $16.72 per hour. The average cost of running an Adult Day Program is $20 an hour on a very shoestring budget. I would say that a higher reimbursement rate would allow Adult Day Programs to be more competitive in the marketplace, attracting more qualified employees to serve the increasing high numbers of disabled and elderly people in our state. And also, Adult Day Programs are not reimbursed when someone is absent, despite the fact that many expenses are still incurred due to sickness and weather. So, please consider increasing the Medicaid reimbursement rate for day centers in Vermont, Adult Day Centers. And we thank you. We're considering our request.
Thank you. Matt Harrington.
Senator Kepian, now... Matt and I are participating at the Select One meeting tonight also. So, I asked him if you would just go ahead and I'd catch up to him.
Is that acceptable to the committee?
Yes. It cost my end a little further, but he said...
Sounds good. John Chaney.
John Chaney. I'm the Director of the Battle of Antifa Corporation. I'm here to submit comments in favor of appropriations in supporting PEG access agencies in Vermont. In my role at ABC, I've had the pleasure of collaborating with CAT TV and media agents. I produce my own show from many years' high-level businesses and the people in the industry. I've been a guest on countless programs featuring local events and issues. I've served as a commentator on CAT TV live coverage of the local battle of the parade. And I've worked with CAT TV doing its live coverage in Mayfest art feature event. Because of all of this, I'm keenly aware of the importance of PEG access and CAT TV in our community. Not only does it provide a voice to those who are often hurt, but it also creates a bridge between local leaders and citizens, providing transparency in our local government. I'm now keenly aware of the challenges facing CAT TV and its counterparts in the state. The traditional funding source is meant to support PEG under threat, and it's necessary to seek alternatives before PEG entities are compromised beyond repair. To this end, I am asking for appropriation of $100,000 to fund the study presented in H744 and S318. It is critical to examine the creative solutions being utilized in our state and understand the options to secure PEG funding to the future. Also, I'm asking for your immediate support of additional appropriation of $500,000 to support PEG centers immediately. Collectively, the centers lost a combined total of $500,000 in 2018 due to GAEP reclassifications. This loss, along with the study deployment of cable subscribers and federal policy threats, have had a negative impact on Vermont's PEG. These threats to funding are only expected to go worse. I hope you'll join me in supporting CAT TV and PEG in Vermont through H744 and S318. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, John.
Sorry about the schedule.
Elisa? And then former Senator Carlson? Then Lori, Lorna, and then we'll wrap up the evening.
Hi. I'm Elisa Foda, and I'm the Director of Meals at Meals in Bennington County. I am here to advocate for the support of the increased funding of the Council on Aging Agencies. We are partially funded by that. However, it's not even half of what a meal costs. So, I am here with... When an older Vermonter has the ability to successfully age in place, we all benefit. And using that example, we prepare over 300 meals per day in our Bennington site. And using that example, um, we, we, we prepare over 300 meals per day in our Bennington site. We deliver, um, over 100 to homebound clients, and then we have four congregate sites where older adults come together. We have four sites here in Bennington. An example of one of what, um, our volunteer drivers do is that if a client, um, is homebound and they do a well check, we do a well check, um, we end up doing not only the friendly socialization, but that's the only, uh, you know, my volunteer or PEG driver is the only person that the other person, that the client might see in a whole week. Um, we have a client, you know, just a quick example, we had a client last week who came home from the hospital, he cannot get home care, uh, till four days after, he had a lung operation, he was bleeding out, uh, from a fall at home, no one was there, but my driver showed up and got him to the hospital. So it's a well check that we do, it's an emergency call to a caregiver. We follow the Older Recovery Act, which anybody over 60 is entitled to a meal. It's a proven fact that, uh, with that nutritious meal and socialization, a senior can live with dignity in their own home. Uh, so I'm really just here to help with, um, the funding that's needed for all of the Council on Aging Agencies.
Great, thank you very much. So Marion Carlson, and then Lori. And then Lorna, and then.
Thank you all for taking time out of your busy schedules.
We should have this in our room tonight.
Yes, yes. Some people might have a grid. I'm here on behalf of the Vermont Suffrage Centennial Alliance, which is an alliance of 37 different organizations sponsored through the, um, mostly, I would say, probably from the Vermont Humanities Council, the National Heritage Partnership, and the idea is to really put in focal what we need to be able to have people be able to vote and to understand what voting's about and how to achieve people getting civic kind of minded people coming to vote, and I think that's really necessary, as we all know. And so this Vermont Alliance is working on doing, what, barriers to voting, not only here, but all over the country, but also sponsoring a parade and festivities and movies and all sorts of things all over the state to kind of highlight what it took to get women to be able to vote and what it would continue to take to get the influence of girls and women and men to vote. And so we're asking for a grant of $20,000, there's a budget that, uh, we have put out for that, and I will, um, email that to you, so you'll understand more about it, but it's just a one-time grant to kind of take this centennial 100 years and focal point it into voting for the future. And then I'd like to add just a little something about S311, because I'd love it to get out of the Vermont, the Senate Natural Resources. It has to do with the, um, Green New Deal.
Right.
But it really has to do with what we're gonna do as a state to make sure that we have solutions to climate challenges.
I think we're gonna do a public hearing down here on some of these issues, I think. The chair, if anyone's interested in that, so, stay tuned.
I'm David Ireland.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Hi, Mary. I haven't seen you in a long time.
Lori.
So I think we'll let Dave second. He will email us.
So it's only, it's only me.
You're called?
Nope, I'm taking it, so.
You're the last person.
So I got 30 minutes. So I got 30 minutes. So thank you for, um, being. I want to add what Julie Cunningham said about, um, special service agencies and designated agencies across the state are collectively asking for a 3% increase in budgets. Primarily, I'm gonna speak about two areas around, um, workforce, really, is one, is that, as you know, we contract the state to provide and do the state's work, and we provide and do the state's work significantly less, um, is what we pay staff for the state. So for instance, a state nurse, for instance, makes about $116,000 a year, whereas a nurse at a designated agency makes about 60 or less. A family service worker at the state earns about $60,000 a year, whereas a family service worker at a designated agency makes about $38,000 to $43,000 a year. So it's significantly less for very similar work, or the same work. And then the other area that is a concern to us is, um, our, uh, direct service providers. These are professionals that, um, work directly with people with disabilities or with people who are elders or can't live on their own, and we know that based on our aging population and our increase in people with disabilities who are also aging, that we're going to need 10 million more direct service professionals over the next, or 1 million more in the next 10 years of direct professional workers. We're not gonna have them, um, in part because the work is incredibly difficult for very little pay. So when a direct service provider, uh, is with somebody who's a, that they're a nurse, they're a companion, they're a cleaner, they're a cook, but they also lift and move and change their bedding and do, um, incredible work, including end-of-life care. For $14 an hour, it's really quite difficult to keep people, maintain people in those jobs and to recruit those folks. So the 3% increase would help us to bring our salaries up to par closer with the state to be able to really bring in quality, um, people who stay, um, because consistency of care makes a big difference. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Do you have any concluding comments?
No, I thank everyone, and, uh, these will all be part of the record. If you want to send an email to any of us, um, with testimony or other thoughts, happy to hear from them. You know, it's, uh, every year, the Appropriations Committee has about $50 million in requests over the year. Every year, it's a, it's a challenge to try to put that together, and, uh, unfortunately, we can't print money. So it's either Brian's Committee on Finance to come up with something, Tim's Committee on Appropriations and Marries and the Institutions that are out, so, you know, the money has to come from somewhere. I will say that the governor, you know, added revenue sources that may not occur. For after-school, it's Vermont.
Right.
Um, for childcare, it's.
Gambling.
Gambling, you know. So, we'll see where those revenue sources come, so that just adds to our, you know, challenge. But that's what we signed up for, that's why we get minimum wage. Well, thank you all.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.